Okay. Good evening, everybody. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the San Alina City Council for February 23, 2016. Would the Vice Mayor please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every legal justice for all.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts.
Here.
I would like to begin this meeting with a moment of silence in memory of extraordinary Peter Mondavi. Thank you very much. And I was trying to say Mondavi, but it didn't quite come out right, you know? But I think Mondavi is the correct pronunciation. I had lunch with Peter a number of times and always enjoyed his company, and he's certainly going to be much missed by everybody here. Let's go to public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us with respect to items not on our agenda, and it's limited to three minutes. Mr. Ellsworth?
Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvaner. May I have an extra minute as recent project developers have been given extra time?
Oh, just see if you can do it within three minutes.
Two items have come across my desk recently. One says, "When word gets out that Napa County has the highest rate of childhood cancer of all California counties and the second highest rate of adult cancer of all California counties, what will happen to rising land value? How will we frame that debate? Does someone else's perception of our wealth sophistication and level of respect afford sacrificing one's health and perhaps life?" Another letter, "Recently, a march took place in Bordeaux in protest of pesticides following a French television documentary based on leaked government information identifying the wine region as one of the highest in pesticide use. Hair samples of children from schools in the area identified forty dangerous chemicals. Statistics show leukemia there are twenty percent higher than the French national average. In the sweet wine region of Sauternes, a whopping five hundred percent higher. Napa County has two twenty-two point eight children killing deaths for one hundred thousand, a sixty-nine percent rise between two thousand and two thousand and twelve, highest in California and the second highest for adults. Popular used pesticides have been linked to cancer, leukemia, kidney disease, Parkinson's, and more. Napa County, when will Napa County residents wake up? According to industry reports, twenty similar pesticide agents are used in Bordeaux, Napa, and Sonoma. With use permit violations, we have no idea what we are being exposed to." Promotion, "California Legislature has enacted the Pesticide School Protection Zone Act designed to protect schools from pesticide drip. Why is Napa County not follow its recommendations? Napa County policies on these life and death issues rather than mitigate continue to exacerbate problems. Promotion of more and more visitors, two hundred thousand more annually over the past two years, prolonging tens of thousands of low-paid commuters both to wine and hospitality industries, are major contributors to carbon emissions with cars and diesel trucks moving at snail's pace in what's becoming an urban-like environment. Mining and asphalt recycling operations in Napa's view carcinogen crystal and silica particles into the air which drift up valley in morning fog. The county is seriously considering allowing expansion of the facility in proximity of nine schools and a hospital. There are over fifty pending applications in the county for new wineries or expanded event centers totaling five hundred sixty-seven thousand new visitors and two point nine million ounces of wine. That will all have to be planted in the watershed, which replenishes our wells and aquifer, from which we all drink and irrigate. From there, the pesticides find their way into our produce and animals and accumulate little by little in our systems until one day we get the news nobody wants to hear. How many destroyed lives will it take to compel supervisors and our elected officials to finally act? When I've asked for our city officials to look into impacts such as this, I've been told it's not in our jurisdiction. Do you think the cancer respects the jurisdiction?"
Thank you very much, Mr. Ellsworth. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at public comment?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Good evening, good evening, City Council. I am the Board President of Napa Valley College, Michael Walden, and just came off and introduced myself. I know we're on the other side of the tracks, and you know, we meet down at Napa, but I just... Just, uh, I'd like to go to school. You will, just for your information here, the residents of San Alina, you will see a RFI going out on the San Alina campus as our focus is turned out in, directed towards the hospitality business, looking at it as a possible center, so we're just looking for ideas. We'll continue to offer classes from the future, and all of the candidates are setting out in American Canyon, Main Campus, and just, uh, just so we don't have other speakers bringing one of them down, uh, let you know what's going on.
Well, I appreciate it.
Any questions about what could be come up in the future in our public communication with Officer Barry Stone, which he's all familiar with, and also our, our brother at the college.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay. Reports by staff and City Council, future agenda items, and A, B, one, two, three, four. Ms. Phillips?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Ms. Metz?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to just let everybody know that even though we just finished our mid-year budget at the last council meeting, we are starting the process for the sixteen-seventeen budget. So, we will be holding a workshop. We're tentatively looking at some time in May. We're just waiting to confirm dates, and once we have dates confirmed, we'll have our first budget workshop in May, potentially a second one late May, early June, for passage of a balanced budget by the end of June. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Black? Mr. Brown?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. House?
Just wanted to give a brief update on two projects that I know are of interest to the community. The Catholic Church is nearly ready to pull the building permit for the Parish Life Center, so just wanted to give an update on that. Construction will be starting, I'm sure, very shortly after they're issued the building permit, and the short-term rental ordinance will be coming back before the planning commission. We don't have a confirmed date yet, but either March fifteenth or April fifth, so that is imminent and coming up soon. Just wanted to let the public and the council know that those are pending.
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Cridon?
Good evening. I just wanted to let the council know that in January, we had eighteen volunteers donate a hundred and twenty-three hours to the library. We're very thankful for their contributions, and I also wanted to invite everyone to, this Thursday at the library, we will have a very talented group of musicians, the Napa Valley, the Napa Youth Chamber Ensemble, which is a part of the Napa Valley Youth Symphony, will be at the library. And next month, Jay Green will be doing a four-part lecture series on the battles of the Civil War, being sponsored by the Friends of Amish, so events to look forward to at the library.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Pitts, do you have anything? Ms. Kroll?
No, thanks.
Mr. Doring?
No, thank you.
Mr. White? And I have nothing either. It's a calm moment in San Alina. Next item is the monthly water update to be presented by Ms. Tool, our Water Conservation Coordinator Extraordinaire.
Good evening. So, I just want to start by, this is a refresher slide. This is what I presented last month. So, these are the reduction totals for June through December of two thousand and fifteen, and all those numbers were comparing to two thousand and thirteen. And so, our average reduction for that time period was just about twenty-one percent. So, our numbers for January are pretty much flat, and we're still comparing to two thousand and thirteen. That's the base year. On February eleventh, the state did change some of the regulations. Most of the regulations changes have to do with urban water providers, and we are not an urban water provider, we are too small. So, the biggest change for St. Helena is that we're going to continue monitoring, and we do have to report to the state, and that our ordinances still need to be in effect until October of this year. So, that's the biggest change for the state. And it's really hard to see the little dot on there. I tried to circle it, but we're basically exactly, our water consumption is exactly where it was in January of two thousand and thirteen. So, there was not a reduction for January. And Bell Canyon is at a hundred percent and continues to be at a hundred percent. The seasonal rainfall for this year is right about twenty inches, and this time last year, seasonal is July to present, it was about twenty-seven inches. So, we are less than what we were for that same time period last year. I have worked with the Napa County RCD, City of American Canyon, Napa County, Yountville, Calistoga, and the City of Napa, and we are... We are sponsoring a video public service announcement contest for high school students. And the flyer that's being passed out right now has all the details. We're, all the agencies have come together to do a county-wide contest aimed exclusively at high school students. We're offering cash prizes between a hundred dollars and five hundred dollars. PSAs have to be thirty seconds. We will not accept anything more than thirty seconds, and the theme is every drop counts. So, it's really trying to get the message out to high school students that water conservation is important, and trying to target them in a creative way that may interest them a little bit more than a homework assignment. And continuing the outreach, continuing working with customers on fixing leaks, working on water agreements, and continuing to work on updating the rebate programs. And that is all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions from members of the council? I have just a couple of observations. I must say that El Nino, to me, is a bust so far.
I would agree.
And it's concerning to me that our rainfall total is only twenty inches. Normal rainfall, to my memory here, is about thirty-six, thirty-nine inches. So, we've got a ways to go by April, when basically it stops, to get to, to or close to normal rainfall. And so, I'm, I am concerned about where we stand to date. And then, I know that twice a year, we also are, take readings. I have some feeling we're required to take readings, but I may be wrong here, but we do take readings at the Stonebridge Wells, and I'll be very anxious to see when they're taking this spring, to see how they're measuring up in terms of spring and fall elevation levels over the last many years. I think we have that data in graph form that goes back to the time when those wells were open in nineteen, I'm going to say nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-six. I could be off by a couple of years here. But that is the one source of our water supply, which to me is, is, could potentially be problematic if, if we don't get some more rainfall. Those are just observations.
Thank you. There are additional flyers over there on the table for the contest.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to our proclamations, and we have two. And let me start with the proclamation for MSS Awareness Week. And do we have folks here that are going to wish to stand with me? Come on up. Reed Family. If you're more comfortable sitting, please sit. Bye. Nice to see you. Yeah. Okay. So, I'm going to read the proclamation, and if you would like to say a few words after I've concluded the reading, please do so, and please feel free to do so. Proclamation. Twenty sixteen MS Awareness Week. Whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting at least two point three million people worldwide, and whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Northern California Chapter reports that in our state, we serve more than twelve thousand people diagnosed with MS, and that the disease generally strikes people in the prime of life between ages twenty and fifty through fifty, and causes unpredictable effects to which the progression, severity, and specific symptoms cannot be foreseen, and the cause and cure for this often debilitating disease remain unknown. And whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Northern California Chapter has been committed for more than fifty-eight years to creating a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge about and insight into the disease while mobilizing people and resources so that everyone affected by MS can live their best lives as we stop MS in its tracks, restore what has been lost, and end MS forever. And whereas since nineteen forty-six, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatment, and a cure, and has invested more than nine hundred and twenty million dollars in groundbreaking research. And whereas funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society fuel the efforts of more than three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty research projects globally, totaling nearly fifty-four million dollars annually at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the United States and abroad, because of this MS research has never been more hopeful than it is today. And whereas discovering the cause, finding a cure, and preventing future generations from being diagnosed with MS is an important task that all Americans and Californians should support. And whereas the City of San Alina State of California recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, a chronic and often debilitating disease, and expresses its appreciation and admiration for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Northern California Chapter has shown toward a future free of MS. Now therefore, I, Alan Galbraith, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the constitutional laws of the great state of California, do hereby proclaim March seventh through thirteenth, twenty sixteen, as MS Awareness Week, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. I encourage all Californians to learn more about multiple sclerosis and what they can do to support individuals with MS and their families. And I have a, an original proclamation which I have signed, and let me present it to you, and if you wish to make a few words, please do so.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Can I take a little photo here? Come on, get up. This is, this is a big deal.
Okay, great. Let me get my notebook out of the way here. Good. Good, thanks very much.
I'm just going to put that on Facebook. Well, thank you so much for this. It really means a lot to the, you know, two point three million people that are dealing with this, as I am. It's a neurological disease that affects a lot of folks. I started a organization called Crush MS here in Napa. We have a small winery, family winery in Napa, and we've been doing a large fundraiser the last couple of years. First year, we raised about twelve thousand; the next year, we raised about fifty thousand; and this year, we're hoping to raise a hundred thousand dollars, and it all goes to MS research at Stanford. So, we're creating a new research platform there to go directly to where this can be cured, and the more awareness, the better. And so, thank you very much for your time. We're going to be doing the same thing in Napa next week, so thanks very much, and you're all welcome to come, crushms.org. Hope to see you there.
When is it?
That's in August. August sixth, first week of August.
Thank you.
And our next proclamation deals with teen dating violence prevention, and we have folks from the Family Center. Hi. Norv is going to be the photographer. Okay. So, let me, let me read again. Proclamation. Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas teen dating violence is a quiet epidemic that affects one point five million teens nationwide in a single year, and whereas one in three high school students have been or will be involved in an abusive relationship, and whereas only thirty-three percent of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse, and whereas physically and sexually abused teen girls are six times more likely to become pregnant and twice as likely to get a SDI, and whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse in the future relationships, and whereas by educating youth about healthy relationships and by changing attitudes that support violence, dating violence can be prevented, and whereas the Up Valley Family Centers and the Clara Program engage young people in learning about healthy and unhealthy dating relationships to prevent dating violence within their lives and the lives of their friends and families, whereas youth, parents, and community members will demonstrate their support for teen dating violence prevention awareness during the month of February twenty sixteen by emphasizing the importance of mutual respect and the right to safe and healthy relationships free from abuse. Now therefore, I, Alan Galbraith, Mayor of the City of San Alina, does hereby proclaim the month of February twenty sixteen as Teen Dating Violence Prevention Awareness Month, and encourage its residents in teen dating violence by empowering youth with education about healthy relationships, assisting teens in assessing resources, and engaging in discussions and prevention activities, making a statement that the community supports relationships free from violence. Here I have a signed proclamation, and let me present it to...
So, these are some of the students.
Okay, good. Who was going to accept?
The girls seem to accept.
Okay. Oh, oh, let's, why don't we get together and then? Okay, good, thanks. Very good. Thank you very much for coming. Did you want to make a quick comment? Sure, sure, go ahead.
So, I would just like to say, on behalf of the Up Valley Family Centers and the Clara and Clara Youth Program, just thank you for this opportunity. It's a great experience for the youth, just to be exposed to the city council and also the opportunity to see that they are making a difference. So, they're becoming leaders already. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, the next item on our agenda is a presentation from, concerning the Napa County-Wide Pedestrian Master Plan, presented by, and I'm going to get this right, the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, formerly the NCTPA. We have to get that out of our minds, and it's being presented by Danielle Schmitz.
Hi.
Nice to see you, Danielle.
Nice to see you, too. Good evening, everyone. For, I know some of you, Mayor Galbraith and Councilmember White, but for those of you that do not know me, I am Danielle Schmitz. I am the Planning Manager for the newly coined Napa Valley Transportation Authority, and I'm happy here to present this evening the draft pedestrian countywide plan. So, why pedestrian, countywide pedestrian plan? We've had some questions about that. As you may recall, we have a countywide bicycle plan, NVTA, as the Countywide Transportation Planning Agency, has had a bicycle advisory committee and a countywide bicycle plan for many years. But it's been more and more imprinted on us that, from the feds, the region, and the state, that we need to acknowledge all forms of active transportation, so including pedestrians. And so, we have an active transportation advisory committee now, and the countywide pedestrian plan is kind of that missing component. There's also pressures from funding sources, so the Active Transportation Program is a funding source that we are able to use for a lot of bike and pedestrian projects, and they actually call for projects to be identified in an active transportation plan, and will, it will most likely be a requirement for any project, but right now, it's a requirement for larger projects over, I think, a million dollars. So, as Mayor Galbraith said, we are now the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, which was adopted last week at our board meeting. So, just to give you a little bit of, what I'm going to go over today is the plan structure, the planning process, where we've been so far and where we're going, and then a little bit about the outcomes that we have right now in our draft plan. So, what makes this really unique is that for the last year, we've been working with, in conjunction with your, your staff, so your technical staff, your public works, and your planning staff, as well as other stakeholders, Active Transportation Committee members on this plan. And so, we've done really good data analysis, we've done GIS mapping of existing infrastructure, we've also looked at existing programs and projects and policies that you have in place. And what's neat about this plan is that the first and the last chapter are countywide. So, you're going to see kind of a broad overview of countywide implementation in the last chapter, and the first chapter is going to be more of an introduction, but the meat of the plan is chapters two through seven, which really provide you individual jurisdictions. So, San Alina has its own chapter of the plan. Ideally, at the end of, you know, this planning process, come June, the San Alina Council would approve their individual pedestrian plan, and we've been working in concert with your staff and your community. So, yeah, chapters two through seven are the jurisdictional plan, and then the whole countywide plan would be adopted by the NVTA Board. Some of the overarching goals of the plan are one pedestrian project per year, or completion of one pedestrian project per year, reduce pedestrian collisions, as well as increase walking trips, and walking trips to transit in particular, because transit is another active transportation mode. It's not a single occupancy vehicle, so making that last mile connector by PED trip is something that we're trying to focus in. Also, identifying funding. So, this is funding not only by development impact fees, but also looking at synergies with other infrastructure projects and making sure that you're acknowledging the pedestrian component of maybe another kind of infrastructure project, and so leveraging that project to also include a pedestrian facility. Safe routes education. So, this would not just be safe routes to school, but safe routes to transit, safe routes for seniors. So, this would include working with, collaboration with senior centers on education encouragement, and then also with the transit providers to improve access. We also have programs, policies, and practices outlined in the plan, and what we've done here is benchmarked best practices across the nation, and then used a score, ranking system of three categories, whether it be key strength, potential enhancement area, or opportunity area. And we've looked at each jurisdiction's programs, policies, and practices, and then provided them one of those three categories. So, a key strength would be something that you are on par with the national best standard with a potential enhancement area, something that you're doing pretty well, but there are areas to improve upon, and an opportunity area would be providing you, you know, this is an area that you could improve upon, and this is how you could do it. So, we are providing these for jurisdictions' information. Moving forward, they can use this as a tool in increasing pedestrian infrastructure, safety, policies, and practices. We also, as mentioned before, this is a real data-driven approach. So, on the far left, I think up there is a map image of existing infrastructure where we actually use GIS mapping layers, if your jurisdiction had them. If you didn't, we actually used our consultant to help map that area. We also mapped pedestrian-involved collisions. So, Switters, which is a statewide database, actually categorizes collisions by PED on vehicle, or bike on PED, or whatever gets reported to law enforcement, and it's logged. And we also looked at potential for demand, which is the far-right heat map up there. So, what that is, is looking at debt population densities in each community, looking at common origin and destination locations, so schools, senior centers, resident, or retail centers, and then mapping, creating a heat map and identifying... centers, and then mapping, creating a heat map and identifying places where pedestrians would be likely to walk. I keep forgetting to put the titles at the end. We, over the last year, we've done extensive public outreach efforts, so we went to each community and provided big floor maps of the area, and then asked the public to write down on sticky notes, you know, anything, so it could be a comment about barriers of why they don't walk someplace, it could be a comment of common routes that they use to walk, or get from point A to point B, and we just felt this was a really good interactive way to get a lot of public feedback. We also used, the map in the middle is actually a map that we had online on the NVTA or NCTPA at the time website, where people could provide a pin, drop a pin on any place that they'd want, and then write in a comment. And then we did workshop comments, so we post-process, we did workshop comments, web map comments, and then we created kind of these perceived barriers, so that far-right place, a lot of times with PEDs and bike, not all incidents or maybe unsafe areas are reported, so something like a near miss is not gonna show up in the Switters data, where there's an actual collision, or some kind of, you know, something that was actually documented by law enforcement. So perceived barriers is kind of a, a way to fill in that gap. You know, it could also be just, you know, a place that I would like to walk, but I don't, because I don't feel safe, the, there's not enough shoulder there, the car speeds too fast, so that's something we also were able to capture in our post-processing efforts. Whoops. So this, all that post-processing really helped us identify places that we were gonna go out into the field within each community and do walking audits. So this was also an opportunity for, I believe, Mayor Galbraith, when, with our consultants, Fair and Peers, our consultants had a little bit more face time with a lot of stakeholders, so not just maybe the technical, public works and planning staff from each jurisdiction, but they also had face time with some stakeholders, elected officials, other community members, and they really got a lay of the land and kind of where potential projects could be. So from the walking audits, we created a list of improvements, pedestrian improvement lists within each jurisdiction, and we came up with even a tiering system, so tier zero were projects that I think that were recently completed, and then we did tier one through three for other projects, and tier one projects are kind of the top priority projects based on, maybe they're further along in the planning process, or they have more community support around them, and so those projects we actually were able to do some preliminary cost estimates for, as well as those were listed in each of the jurisdiction's appendix. And then there's also a complimentary programs and funding element to the plan, so we have safe routes to school, safety and law enforcement, maintenance, engineering, and design standards, and complete street standards, that were all mentioned in the plan, and a couple of the recommendations are... Go back. Recommended routes to school, so actually going out into school sites, walking with staff, with parents, with students, and, and jurisdictional staff, and just, you know, mapping the area, and looking at ways to induce more pedestrian travel around school sites. Evaluating and tracking trends through count programs, so that's something that was, one of the outcomes from the consultants, said that we should have a yearly count and evaluation program, and I think that's something that NVTA will establish, so we'll do actual annual counts. We did a lot of counts in, throughout the county, I think you might have seen some of the cameras that were in downtown St. Helena, so it was infrared, and then we also did hand counts, so we actually sent people out and did hand pedestrian counting as well. And, I think the last slide is the best practices, wow. Am I pointing it at the right? Okay. Oh, best practices toolkit. So at the very end, we have the best practices toolkit, which is a treatment glossary for each jurisdiction to use, so we actually looked at, you know, any kind of information that maybe your jurisdiction is looking at, and you wanna know the best practices on crosswalk guidelines, for instance, we have recent research in there from the Federal Highway Administration on when to use, and how to mark enhanced crosswalks, we have sidewalk zone and corners, pedestrian wayfinding signage, pedestrian scale lighting, street furniture, bus stop amenities, all those are in the best practices toolkit, which is really valuable for each jurisdiction to use while they're going, and I think it's a, gonna be a really good reference guide and material for your public works and planning staff, so. I think that's it, and, oh, yeah, there it is. So online, we have our pedestrian, draft pedestrian plan. We released it last week, so between now and the end of March, we're asking for public comments back, so please go on there, it's a kind of enormous document, but I think that if you read the last chapter, or the first chapter and the last chapter, and then the chapter on St. Helena, and then the St. Helena appendix, then you're, you're pretty, you're pretty good, and so we're asking for people to provide comment back, there's a way to comment back on the website, or you can email myself, or Alberto's here, who's another planner at NVTA, and we're heading up the effort right now. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, I know some of you may not have gotten through the whole document, so we're gonna be around for the next month if you have questions after mulling it over a little bit.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You first.
I'm just wondering, is there any, was there any discussion in this about a petty bus? It's something that, that goes on in Italy, where they, instead of having a school bus, there's an adult or two that walks children to school.
Yeah, like a walking school bus?
Yeah. Is there any discussion about that?
I think that, that might be under the safe routes to school program, where I think walking school bus is one of the ways to make parents feel more safe about letting their kid walk to school, and then, you know, ingraining kind of best practices, and if they do it more, they're more likely to become walk, avid walkers in their adult life, and kind of with riding a bike as well.
So that's in here?
Mm-hmm.
I had one question, and I commend you for, it's a great, great work product, and love what you're doing. In, in the review of St. Helena, did, we have some historic alleyways that a couple of years ago were shut down, that were pedestrian alleyways, that are sort of interesting, it might be worth looking at and revisiting as to utilizing them as part of our, our PED plan? One is between Adams Street and Pine Street, I think there's another one in the Sylvaner neighborhood.
Yeah.
And then there are also downtown, are some interesting pedestrian alleyway connections that aren't really utilized, like between the old Star Building and, you know, just south of that, that could be, you know, become more common cut-throughs if they were maybe improved a little bit and beautified. So I just, if those weren't looked at, I think they'd be worth looking at.
Yeah, I will...
Sort of pedestrian shortcuts.
Yeah, I will double check. I do think that they, the consultants were looking at those types of, of things when they did their field review, but I will specifically look at that, those alleyways.
Sylvaner one is at the end of Pino.
Okay.
So it's at the end of Pino, and it was...
It gets at the end of Pino, and it, it's like a, a trail that hooks into...
Is it something that is commonly, are people using it now?
Well, the one on Adams Street to Pine is actually fenced off for some reason.
Oh.
And I'm not sure why that happened, but it'd be interesting to look at it.
I think it may have been fenced off in reaction to a crime, quite frankly, years, years ago.
That's my recollection. I don't know if it was a crime, but it was a, there was some fear of, of something happening.
Right.
Anyway, just, uh...
Yeah.
There's some neat little cut-throughs that are, are good pedestrian shortcuts.
Okay, I'll definitely look into that. It's good feedback.
How does the local school district weigh in, in the process? Are there meetings or presentations in front of our school districts so that they can weigh in in terms of their concerns?
Yeah, we invited the school districts, when we created this plan, to come in for, I believe, the walking audits and some of the stakeholder meetings. One of the outcomes of the plan was to do more, just do more kind of programs oriented around the school district, like I mentioned before, doing the school site walks, so that's not actually part of this planning effort, but there was a recommendation that jurisdictions look into that in the future, so, I mean, those kinds of things we'll, we'll keep, and, you know, when we update our pedestrian plan, or if St. Helena, or if Napa unified, or somebody decides to do a little bit more outreach or effort, they can use this as a starting place, and, you know, saying, oh, I'm gonna start a program where I go to at least, you know, two schools a year or something, and we do a site walk and evaluate what can be done to improve pedestrian traffic.
My concern is sometimes there's a disconnect between the different jurisdictions, even on a local basis, a school district, or the, or the city, or private schools, or whatever, so the more we can have a process, a formal process, where all of the institutional stakeholders can participate, not only at the beginning, but as the process develops over time, so that they can weigh in, and I think it helps with communication, so that we're all on the same page in terms of what our efforts are.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Thank you.
Any further comment, Mr. White?
One question. So you want public comment until the end of March, or...
Yeah, so, well, it's kind of twofold, so lar, so lar, we're gonna kick off, our timeline is, we're gonna kick off our environmental process at the end of March.
Okay.
So what the environmental process is gonna do on the plan is really look at some of those top-tier projects, and identify what kind of environmental studies, or what kind of environmental work would need to be done, and so for that component of it, this is why we're going to each of the jurisdictions, or talking with the jurisdictions, I mean, particularly Steve and his staff, and asking, you know, are these projects listed under St. Helena, you're, the list of projects that you wanna move forward with? Because we can't really change the projects after environmental starts, because environmental's gonna take three months. Any public comment, we can take until May timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah. So if it's more of a semantics thing, or, you know, you want me to look at alleyways, and us to mention some alleyways that were maybe historically used in the past, those kinds of language things, we can incorporate into the plan after March, but it's really on those major kind of top-tier projects that we want informa- or comments back, or if something needs to change between now and the, and the end of March.
Great, thanks Danielle.
And there's another one of those alleys that goes from Pine Street, it may go over to Bedrona, I know it's just below Peter McCray's house there.
Oh, yeah.
So there's another one there. My only thought here is, I've been through the document, I had the Tamarra to ask for a hard copy, because it is a very detailed document, and it's, to my way of thinking, if you're gonna read and understand it, you have to be able to go back and forth between the introduction, the end, the St. Helena section, quite frankly, if you suffer from insatiable courteousy, as I sometimes do, that's a cyping expression, I couldn't resist looking at some of the other jurisdictions as well. And so I would strongly urge any member of the council, if he or she wishes to look at a hard copy, to ask the Napa Valley Transportation Authority to get a copy to you at City Hall.
Yeah, we can send some...
It's much easier than trying to look at it. It, you know, it's, it's a thick document, it's this thick, and as she says, there is a St. Helena section, and there's an awful lot that's in the form of charts and in fairly small print, so, and we're gonna be asked to deal with this again in June, so, you know, it's, it takes a while to get your arms around this one.
Right.
I'm assuming it's been cross-referenced and compared to the Bike Plan as well?
Yes, so we, NVTA did the countywide bicycle plan, and so, yeah.
There's one at the end of Adams Street, too, that cuts over to Hunt.
You should go around a map of one.
Secret passages, I see.
There's a few others around, too.
Are there?
Okay, very good.
Yeah, so, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Danielle.
All right. This takes us to our consent calendar, which is items ten through seven, seventeen, and as always, any member of the public, as well as any council member, can ask that an item be withdrawn from the consent calendar, so if anybody so wishes, please speak up. Item ten, consideration of proposed approval of a resolution approving the use of the fire station parking lot for Earth Day activities by the St. Helena, St. Helena Chamber of Commerce, and waiver of the encroachment fee in the amount of $200. Item eleven, consideration of proposed approval of a resolution updating the September eighth, twenty fifteen, adopted retention schedule. That deals with documents. Twelve, consideration of proposed approval of a resolution approving an employment agreement with Kathy Robinson to serve as the Human Resources Information Technology Director. Thirteen, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving amendment number one to the employment agreement with John Sorenson to serve as the fire chief for three additional years. Fourteen, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve the purchase of equipment for an outfitting of the two new police department patrol vehicles, the amount of $27,126. Fifteen, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution finding an exemption from SEQA for the 2016 Slurry Seal Project, approving and adopting the project manual, and authorizing the bid request for 2015 pavement rehabilitation project. Sixteen, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution finding an exemption from SEQA, approving and adopting the project plans and manual, and authorizing the bid request for Mitchell Drive Sidewalk, Sidewalk Project, Capital Improvement Project R-76. Seventeen, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving outstate travel for Library Director Chris Criden to attend the Public Library Association Conference in Denver, Colorado, April five through nine, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $1,400. Now, does anybody wish to pull any of these items? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to approve consent items ten through seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Item eighteen, public hearing item, introduction, first reading of ordinance to consider amendments to City of St. Helena Municipal Code Section 17.08.180, 16.24.060, and 16.24.100, establishing a uniform fourteen-day appeal period. In other words, a real attempt here to eliminate confusion, and Mr. House is the author of clarity here, or the promoter of clarity here.
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, and Council. The project before you tonight, as you mentioned, is proposing amendments to the municipal code to establish a fourteen-day appeal period throughout all sections of the code. Currently, there are inconsistencies in several sections of the municipal code, including the zoning code, with regards to the number of days that an appeal can be filed after a decision is made, essentially some are ten days and some are fourteen days. Separate from this, or in conjunction with this, I should say, occasionally the director of the department is required to make administrative-level decisions, there has been some issues with regards to creation or establishment of the appeal period for those administrative-level decisions, including notification of when those decisions are made, to allow the public to file an appeal if there's a desire to do so. So also built into this code section is, is an attempt to clarify the administrative determination, notification process, and then establish an appeal period associated with it. So essentially, in order to address these inconsistencies and to create a new appeal period for administrative determinations, staff's proposing to create an appeal period for fourteen days consistence, consistently across zoning and essentially the subdivision section of the municipal code, those are the two areas. And this is specific to section seventeen, zero eight, one, eight, zero B, there's some identified text in the staff report as a strike through to allow clarity in understanding what the language is, and then there's the ordinance which has the actual language. The Planning Commission reviewed these changes on February second of this year, and unanimously approved or supported the fourteen-day appeal period for all appeal actions. However, in reviewing these requirements, the commission asks that for notification to be expanded beyond just property owners, and also include... and also include residents, uh, for administrative level decisions or determinations. So, uh, staff supports the intent of this, however, it will create a new discrepancy, uh, if the council supports it because currently, all notification processes are only to property owners and this would create an exception for administrative determinations to be sent to property owners and residents. So that was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission. Um, however, again, it will create a new discrepancy. There are no fiscal impacts associated with, uh, addressing the ten day versus fourteen day appeal period. However, should the council, uh, direct staff to support and incorporate the commission recommendations for both resident and property owner notice, there will be some increased costs associated with the staff time to prepare those additional notifications, uh, the office supplies used for those and the postage. So staff just wanted to point that out. Um, so staff is requesting, um, direction from the commission regarding adding the additional notification requirements as proposed by the Planning Commission, finding that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA under the general rule, and then we are recommending that, uh, those, these proposed changes be adopted. Uh, there is some history on this, uh, associated with specific projects. Uh, there's also some new code language with regards to when the director is required to, um, notify folks of those determinations and so staff's available for any questions on any of those issues, uh, should you have any.
Well, are there any initial, uh, questions of staff before I open the public hearing?
Were there any other timing inconsistencies? For instance, you know, we have to consider the appeal within thirty days in certain situations, then make a decision within ten. Have those also been streamlined across our code?
To my knowledge.
All right. Let me, uh, open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment publicly? Uh, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, are there any further questions, members of the council?
I don't, I don't have a question. I just have comments.
I've got one, one question here, uh, and that is with respect to the Planning Commission recommendation dealing with notification of residents. How do you identify a resident? Do we run the risk, uh, that, uh, someone could claim to be a resident, uh, and lacked, uh, notification? In other words, I could see there's a real process with respect to, uh, uh, properties because you're operating off of the information that the, uh, recorder of deeds maintains in the ordinary course of business. My concern is that, that, that if we don't operate off of, uh, of recorded information, uh, fixed in time, uh, that we run the risk of, of an appeals process that, uh, could be challenged. That's my concern. And if that's a real concern, uh, uh, then I, I think you can see where I've headed on that recommendation.
Definitely. And so the, the idea from staff and from the commission was that, uh, we would notify essentially occupants or send, send a notice to the physical address in addition to the listed property owner as associated with the accessory records within three hundred feet. So it's, you know, if you had a off-site property owner or a, a property was rented, um, the notice would go both to the folks who live off-site and own the property, but also to the occupant of the, of the property. Um, I think your question is specific to legal terminology and maybe that one, I don't know if the city attorney would like to chime in on that. We, if, if the council wants to support the concept of, uh, expanded notification, I think we could work with the city attorney to come up with some language that would address that concern. Um, from staff's perspective, planning staff's perspective, it's, it's more of a question of, uh, is there an interest in expanding notification to occupants in addition to property owners? Resident i- is, is a, a term that I would use interchangeably, but legally, it could be some questions.
Maybe you could just say, um, notification should go to, um, to the address of record of the property owners as well as to the physical address and just take the word resident out.
Yes. I mean, yeah. I, I, I think the use of the word resident is, if it's in there, is a mistake or is, is a mistake. I didn't quite mean it to come out that way, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, I, I think it could introduce, I, I think it could introduce ambiguity.
I, I, I think that, and my understanding is that this ordinance before the council tonight doesn't, does not undertake to address that issue yet and that, that there will be additional drafting, uh, required.
The, the language is inclu- included in the staff report portion of the, so, so the description of the changes in the staff report, it's not in the ordinance. If it's directed by the council to include it, we will add that language.
Right.
Work with the city attorney to make sure it's legally justifiable and then.
So we can, we can look into that as we're, as we're drafting.
Okay. Well, uh, any further?
Well, my comments is we've just, we've, there've been a couple instances in the past. Um, and first of all, I really think it's a great idea to have a uniform appellate period, definitely. Um, but there have been, there have been situations that have arisen in the past, and I can't remember a specific example, unfortunately, but where, for example, the Planning Commission has taken an action on a Tuesday night. A member of the public has become aware of it when they read the St. Helena Star on Thursday, um, or Friday. It was a holiday, like, for example, I can't, I think it was, it was either Thanksgiving or Fourth of July and then, which really only gave them, they felt, three business days to figure out whether they wanted to appeal. And we charged a thousand dollars for an appeal, which is not an insignificant amount of money and you don't get it back. So, um, there was concern that, um, if they, that they didn't have it, that they might need to consult an attorney. They might need to have clarification from staff. They might want to try to talk to their neighbor and that fourteen calendar days wouldn't be enough. So I was gonna suggest perhaps we'd move to fourteen business days, um, to, so that we, when we have a holiday situation, it's a little bit, it, it's a little bit less burdensome. Now, I mean, obviously, it's hard on the applicant because it extends the period of time for the project. So, um, because when I first thought about this, I thought thirty days, because in the legal world, it's mostly thirty day appeals. But that would be a long time for the applicant to have to wait. So it seems that, um, I, I just think that in certain, in certain, the way, the way dates fall and the way people become informed about things in this town, sometimes fourteen calendar days doesn't seem to be enough.
Cause I was actually thinking, not necessarily supporting one or the other, why'd we choose fourteen versus ten? And I, my assumption was to provide a little bit more time for those exact situations because if it's a decision made on a Tuesday, you have fourteen days and it's two weeks later, right?
Unless there's an intervening holiday and people, a lot of times, as you and I know, people aren't watching the Planning Commission meetings that night. They don't become aware of it until, often until the paper is published on Thursday. So, um, and that kind of starts triggering, oh, my gosh, I better figure, you know. It, it's just something that we've had situations where people haven't been infor- informed, their appeals have been denied from a, um, time, um, a timeliness, uh, issue. And I just feel like it's left a bad feeling in people's minds. So, I, I, I mean, I can go either way. I definitely think fourteen over ten, but it just seems like at certain times when there's.
What do other communities of our size have?
I haven't undertaken to, um, to look into that, but I can tell you that in my experience, um, fourteen days is sort of the outside of what I've seen. Typically, they're, they're ten. Um, there is a bias or a, a preference, um, in most cities and in state law for prompt decision-making and land use, um, such that, that, and for example, there is, um, there are unusually short limitations periods um, that are applicable for challenging a decision after the, the council has made it. Um, and, but I, but you really do have the discretion to, um, notwithstanding that preference in the law to extend it. And, um, but again, my, I, I defer to, to Mr. House as to what he's seen. What I've seen in my experience is that fourteen days is on the long side. Ten days is more common.
So it says here, we would have to notify them within three days. So that cuts it even a little bit shorter if we don't get on the, or if we send it in the, in the snail mail. So it could really be eleven days.
So my experience is similar to the city attorneys in that ten days is, I think, somewhat of the industry standard. Fourteen is, is, um, not, not, um, uncommon, but it, it is the longer period that I've seen. I haven't seen beyond that.
Mr. White?
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment that, in the interest of, of clarity, I think if we start talking about, uh, holidays and, and, and such, that, you know, what is a holiday? What is a business day? Where I think fourteen days is, is plenty of time to make an appeal. And so, I mean, my thought would go towards that. And as far as the residents or, I guess, occupancy is concerned, I could go either way, but, um, I don't think it would be that big of a deal to send a notice to the, to the, uh, actual residents within, or the, um, properties.
Properties within the three hundred.
Yeah, within the three hundred feet.
Right, that's a, well, uh, you know, I don't, I guess, I come out with a thought that fourteen days, and when you, when you're talking about fourteen days, you're not counting the day the decision is made. It starts the next day. Uh, and if the fourteenth day is a holiday or a national holiday or a city holiday, it gets extended, uh, 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 another day. So, uh, uh, you are counting intermediate, uh, uh, federal holidays if they arise. Uh, I'm trying to think back through the rules of federal civil procedure as to whether those are excluded or not. I just can't remember at this point. But, uh, to my way of thinking, at the city level, we should keep it simple and keep the count so, simple.
And so are we required to notify them within three calendar days or three business days? So.
Well, there's no notification requirement except for administrative decisions by Mr. House. So for, for an appeal from the Planning Commission, the, it, it's quite important not to impose a, an additional notice requirement um, because the law doesn't do that.
Right, and presumably, in that situation, uh, the folks most affected are gonna know, uh, of the decision by the Planning Commission on the day it's made. So.
You'd be surprised.
I can also answer that under California's counting rules, and there are counting rules, um, any holiday that falls within that period is not excluded. So the fourteen day, the only way that the time is extended is if the fourteenth day falls on a weekend or a holiday. And in that case, as the mayor said, it's extended past the weekend day or, um, or the holiday.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to point out, we've had some situations in the past.
Okay, so, uh, at this point, the Chair would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendation uh, with respect to the, um, fourteen day appeal period. Uh, and staff is gonna come back, uh, at a later time with respect to appeals from administrative decisions by the director. That's where we are.
It would be my goal just to incorporate that language into the ordinance and bring it back with the second reading.
Oh, but it would have to go through the first reading?
Well, there already is the language in their, in the ordinance before the council this evening addressing the administrative decisions by Mr. House. I think that the, what, what the direction from the, from the council, as I understood it, and from the commission, was to come back with language addressing the notice to occupants.
Correct.
And that is what we would.
It currently says, "and residents" in the ordinance before the council. So that would be clarifying language, I believe. It would be a question for the city attorney whether we need to bring it back for a first reading.
Oh, I, I, I stand corrected on that. That's right. It is, um, residents right now. My recommendation would be that the council can, um, can, uh, change that language this evening to occupant. I think that would be, um, or either occupant or properties.
What about with copy to physical property or physical address?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and with that change, we can come back, um, to the council in, with a second reading and you can take a look at.
We don't, we don't wanna get into defining whether someone's actually an occupant or not, or a resident or not. So we're copy to physical address.
To the physical addresses. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, may I be heard just on another clarification, uh, with respect to the administrative, um, appeal? The, the, you start out, it says, "at the discretion of the director," and then you have, then you continue on, "the director shall." Uh, to me, that's sort of inconsistent. At, on the one hand, you don't have to do it, but then you're saying you shall do it. I think that needs to be kind of cleaned up a little bit. We either have, it's either mandatory or discretionary, so I don't, maybe we would want to put "may" or something. I don't know, uh, council, but, uh, if you start out discretionary and then you, then you force yourself to be mandatory, is that appropriate?
It, it would be perfectly appropriate to leave that language as is. What, the council may recall that we've had, I think, three different instances that gave rise to this, the thinking on this. One was the jewelry store. Um, the second was, um, which was a situation, I think, um, that engendered this language with, um, Mr. House. And you'll recall there, there was a decision made by the, um, by the planning director um, that nobody knew about. And so the appeal period ran and the council ultimately found, and, and my office, um, opined, that the appeal period couldn't run in the absence of some notice meaningful to, to neighbors and, and project opponents. That's what this language is trying to get at. Mr. House and I talked about this at some length. He was concerned about the practical, um, uh, application of a requirement that would impose a notice requirement on every decision he makes administratively. This was his effort to, um, to come up with, with a reasonable, uh, alternative. In my view, this language, um, would create a situation that would essentially affirm what the city council agreed to and my office opined, is that if Mr. House doesn't give notice in some manner, the appeal period won't run because the Constitution requires that, that meaningful notice of a decision be given before an appeal period can lapse. This is his effort to find a middle ground, um, such that not every decision will be noticed. Um, but the ones that he determines are, um, are of public interest, more public, potential public controversy, would be noticed and that would trigger, uh, an appeal period for, uh, appeals to the Planning Commission. The other two that we're trying to deal with, you'll recall that earlier in the year, uh, earlier last year, we had, uh, an application for a lot split and, and development where, um, both a tentative map, a parcel map was involved and a use permit, and we had the ten day period and the fourteen day period. The applicant got one of them, but missed the other one. And so we were out of fairness trying to create a situation where there was, there were uniform appeal periods. Um, so, um, and there was a third problem that we had that we all confronted as well. I believe it might have been thirteen eighty, man. But this was our effort to address those problems and create a little bit more, um, transparency and certainty in the process.
You okay with that?
You know, just one lawyer's opinion. I, I respect it. I'm fine with it. I, I think it's problematic, but I, I understand the, uh, the genesis of it. That's fine.
So let me see if I can restate my motion just a little bit, uh, or restate what I think is on the table and invite, uh, a motion. And that is that, uh, we accept, uh, the staff recommendation, uh, with respect to, uh, what is proposed, but with the, uh, qualification, uh, that, uh, with respect to notice involving administrative appeals, it goes to, uh, properties within three hundred feet.
And, and owners.
And owners.
And, oh, and the owner, yes.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilman for Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to, uh, item nineteen, uh, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to consider amendments to City of St. Helena Municipal Code, Chapter two point five two, concerning the Board of Library Trustees. Ms. Criden?
Hello again. Um, on November eighteenth, twenty fifteen, the Library Board of Trustees held a special meeting at the library to discuss their duties and responsibilities and to compare these to the current City of St. Helena Municipal Code, Chapter two point five two, which governs the board, its duties and its responsibilities. The board's recommendations for the updating of this chapter, which resulted from the special meeting, were presented to the city manager and to the city attorney's office for discussion and legal evaluation.
Thank you very much.
Um, the changes being asked for incorporate the concerns expressed and recommendations made by all parties. Uh, the Library Board of Trustees, at their February tenth, um, meeting, voted to recommend that the city council adopt these changes. Um, one of the, the first change was Chapter two fifty-two point zero ten, uh, which is the composition of the board. Um, currently, the rules state that there are five members, when actually, there are seven. Uh, the city council approved this change in, uh, twenty fourteen. Um, this change also results in, um, a change to the number of members needed for quorum. Um, and, uh, yeah, that was the basic changes for that one. Um, s- there was also another change, um, which concerned special meetings. Um, this change would, um, result in, uh, meeting the, uh, Brown Act, um, which governs special meetings. And then another change was to, um, chairperson or the. And then another change was to chairperson or the title. The City of St. Helena Protocol for Committees, Commissions, and Boards states that a committee will be, committee will select a chairperson and vice chairperson. This changes it from what's currently stated in the municipal code. Sorry. Also, under powers of the board, Section C currently, and consistently in the past, the library director appoints and fixes the duties and the powers of those employees under his or her supervision. And the fixing of compensation has always been at the discretion of the city. The Board of Trustees will still advise the city council in determining the duties and powers of the library director. Section D would add, would make clear the library board's role in the budget process, which is to review, approve, and recommend to the St. Helena City Council the library's annual budget. Currently, it just states that it's to purchase necessary books, journals, publications, and other personal property. And there is no fiscal impact by adopting these changes to this chapter of the city's municipal code.
All right, any initial questions of Ms. Criden? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public comment. Any further council discussion? Mr. Doring?
I think it should be "which" instead of "who" under D.
Okay.
And we're talking about the city council. If it was city council members, maybe it would be right, it's city council "which" may adopt. Am I, is that the grammatical correctness then? Which, that's it.
Okay. Any further? Any further comment? My only observation would be that with respect to 2.52.030, it says "subject to approval and confirmation thereof by the city council." Makes it very clear, as it must be, that at the end of the day, the ultimate fiduciary is the city council. I've always been a little troubled by the word trustees, but I'm not going to make a point of it, only because to be trustees implies fiduciary control. But at the end of the day, I think this is clear enough, and I'm prepared to go with it, if my colleagues are. Given the fact that it's very clear that, at the end of the day, what happens here is subject to the city council approval. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the staff's recommendation with the minor change.
Who to which? Mr. Pitts seconded?
Councilor Doring?
Yes.
Pitts. Kroll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This takes us to item 20 on our agenda, which is review and direction on a request from Our Town, St. Helena, to use affordable housing trust fund monies in the estimated cost ranging from $32,000 to $65,000 to cover planning, application, review fees for an affordable eight-unit housing project at 684 McCorkle. Avenue. I want to say avenue. Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The request before you tonight, as you mentioned, is a request from Our Town, St. Helena, to use affordable housing trust fund monies and the estimated costs ranging from $32,000 to $65,000 to cover development application review fees for an affordable eight-unit housing project at 684 McCorkle Avenue. On May 12th, 2015, the city council agreed to sell the property at 684, which the city owned, or it was, for a dollar to Our Town, St. Helena, for the construction of an eight-unit affordable housing project, as you all are well aware. Discretionary and building permit approvals for this project will be required, which is necess, in order to gain this approval, the applicants will be required to submit applications for the review, project materials, and they will be filed or required to cover those costs with application fees. Our Town, St. Helena, has filed a letter requesting that these fees be covered through use of affordable housing trust fund monies. The eight-unit project has a number of discretionary applications as listed in the staff report. Then there would be a building permit, and then public works plan reviews for the final map, because it is a subdivision. As I mentioned, the total estimated cost for these fees is $32,000 to $65,000, and I do apologize for the range of fees. There hasn't been any staff review of the final plan set. We've been working with the department, or I'm sorry, the Our Town, St. Helena, but we haven't seen the final plan set, and so there's some questions associated with the exact design. Also, SEQA is somewhat of an unknown at this point with regards to total cost. That is also in this request. And so we're proposing the range. Currently, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has approximately $957,000 in it, which is also identified in the staff report. There's no direct impact on the city's general fund budget related to this request. If it's approved, the application fees to cover the staff time would be transferred from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to cover the cost as a payment. It would leave the approximate balance of the trust fund ranging from $925,000 to $892,000, based on the range of the potential application costs. And of course, staff would bring a resolution with the final amount back before the city council for action if this is supported. So it's recommended by the Planning and Community Improvement Department that the city council consider the request from Our Town, St. Helena, and provide direction to staff as to whether to use trust fund monies to cover the application, planning application, building, and public works fees for the affordable housing project at 684 McCorkle. And the Our Town, St. Helena representatives are here, and they also have a presentation for you.
All right. Any initial comments, the staff? Let me open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Howard Siegel. I'm project manager for Our Town, St. Helena. It was before you, you may recall, a month ago when we had another item related to this particular project. And I see the, we're firing up the screen here. Thank you very much. We have a brief presentation, just to sort of set the context of this project and this request for you. This is shorter than most of ours, so I'm under strict orders to keep this to 10 minutes. So I'll do the best I can. The, as soon as I can figure out how this thing functions, to the right, here we go. Okay, so the larger context here is Our Town, St. Helena is trying to address affordable housing on a number of fronts here, and we've made some progress on all of them to some extent. And one is deed restricting existing homes so that work, working force people, whether it's moderate income or low income, can live there for a lengthy period of time. The, we are working towards generating some farm worker family housing in and around St. Helena. And the project in question tonight falls into the self-help ownership category. And essentially, what that, the point is, it's a, ultimately, a two-site project, right now McCorkle being the first site. But we've been working with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, has a rural development program for small communities, and they have already provided over $500,000 worth of grant funding to assist us with this. But that money has to be spread over two projects. We haven't identified the second site yet. We're working towards that, McCorkle being the first site. And essentially, what we're trying to do is create eight, on the first site, eight of those 18 or 19 homes that would be built in part by the families themselves, and they are all in the low and very low income categories. You see the RENA requirements mentioned up there? If I'm not mistaken, I think four is your very low requirement for this RENA cycle. And we do have, there's a possibility we might be able to address some of that on this particular site. Okay, so this is just the rendering of what we're talking about here. I'll have more detail to show later. So again, the financing, I already mentioned, the $550,000 that will come from the U.S. Department of Agriculture in grants. And we are in the process of working with both the County of Napa and Rural Community Assistance Corporation, which is a nonprofit that's been helping us with this. And between the two of them, we hope to generate $500,000 in loan money to assist us with pre-development. Because essentially, what will happen in the long term is these families will actually purchase the subdivided parcels in order to build the homes, and that's when the money will flow back to Our Town, and we'll be able to repay those loans. Well, one thing I should point out, the funding that is being requested from the County of Napa, the 280,000 of the 500,000, would involve a rollover into eight individual silent second loans for those families. So that will come up later in the discussion, because that will help minimize the size of the mortgage that they will need to take on. Because again, obviously, their income level, we're talking about a fairly small window. They have to make enough money to qualify for these mortgages, albeit low-interest, long-term mortgages, but not so much that they exceed the income limits for those two categories. So again, the families would work essentially evenings and weekends. We're talking about something that will take a year or perhaps 15 months to do this. And this will be, of course, under professional supervision. The technical, mechanical, electrical type of work will be done by professionals, not by the, not by the families. But a lot of the carpentry and framing and some of the things that is felt that they can handle under supervision would be done by the families. So that's, that's one of the other things that keeps the cost down. So on a parallel track, of course, we have solicited interest from families in the area that would be willing and able to participate in this program. So as you can see, we started out with 47 families. The majority of them are from the Up Valley area, and either living or and/or working. And the initial screening process has left us with 30 families, and we are just beginning the credit check process essentially now. So what we hope to have is certainly more than the eight that we need for this project. And if we do, we'll conduct a lottery to determine how that will go. One of the, one of the things yet to be determined is if we are able to afford to take in some of the very low-income families, there might have to be a separate lottery. At the moment, I believe there are five of those 30 families are in the very low-income category. Again, and I think we have mentioned most of this already, the credit, I think the credit check will be a big reality check for the families to see how many of them can really afford to make the required payments. So as, I'm sure you're all familiar, this is just an aerial view. It's a long, narrow site, so essentially, we're talking about two separate structures with some open space in between. And it'd be four two-story units in each of these two structures. Okay? And the parking issue, which I know is important to the neighbors, we did have a community meeting assisted by Noah and his staff in, I think it was December, and that seemed to be the primary issue the neighborhood was concerned with, was will people be parking on the property and not on the street? So essentially, what we're creating here is what amounts to two and a half parking spaces per unit. It'll include one built garage for one car, and then enough spaces to accommodate a second car plus four visitors. Plus four visitors. So essentially, it's 20 spaces altogether for eight units. And these units are just under 1,400 square feet, not counting the garage, which is about another 240, 250 square feet. Three-bed, one and a half bath. So again, you know, we certainly want to continue to work with the neighbors, and one of the suggestions that came out of the community meeting that we thought was a great one, was once we've selected, the families have another meeting with all the neighbors and the families that will actually be participating in this process, just to talk about the logistics of how this will work, because we're very sensitive to the issues that, you know, can occur during this process and beyond. So we're trying to be as energy and water efficient as possible, keeping in mind the city's water neutrality policy. And we have worked with Upper Valley Disposal to make sure that we've actually sort of flipped the orientation of the site to make it easy for the disposal, the refuse trucks, to back into the site, because they can't back out into a public street, but they can back into a private site, and then pull straight out. Another thing we're in the process of doing is working with the homeowners association on the adjacent property to the rear, which would be the emergency vehicle access. So we actually have a meeting with their folks, I think, next week. How am I doing on time? Not too bad? Okay. And here again, just some of the breakdown that Mr. House referred to earlier of the fee waiver request. Currently, this is our schedule as of now that we're hoping to be able to make. We are hoping to close escrow over the next few weeks, and I know Mr. House alluded to the full, formal application. We're essentially waiting until we take ownership to submit that, but we're virtually ready to do that at any time. We are making a presentation to the County Housing Commission on Thursday, which will include both a description of the project as well as a request for the loan that I mentioned earlier. And we know, obviously, staff has a period of time that they're going to have to do staff review and get back to us before we can get to the stage of planning and/or city council approval. But what we're hoping to be able to do is start doing site development this summer and actual construction in the early fall. So that's, that's our story, and we're sticking to it for the moment. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we're still looking for another acre somewhere in town that we could replicate this particular project with eight, 10, possibly 11 homes. But again, it would be essentially the same model using the same players.
How long does it take to build?
12 to 14 months is what we're told. And there you have it. So certainly, any questions either about the project or the financing, we'd be happy to answer.
Any?
I have one or two. Why is the deed restriction only 55 years?
Well, I know that has sort of been a common duration that's been used in public agencies. I know that that's what the county typically uses as a minimum. It could be longer than that, but it's sort of been something that's been in use for a number of years. Frankly, I don't know what the origin of that number is, but that's usually a minimum 50-plus years is what folks who are financing tax credit, folks, for example, are always looking for a duration of that long.
Right. And I guess my question is really about, you know, the city land that's been sold for a dollar, and, you know, waiving fees and whatnot to support this model. Is there, is there the openness to consider a longer deed restriction period, maybe even in perpetuity, so that these units are always, you know, some level of affordable housing product for our community?
Yeah. I mean, from my perspective, I don't think we would have a problem with that.
I don't know why we'd want to let it run off, and maybe we should think about that. I don't know if there are restrictions, but it's certainly on my mind.
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to look it up. I mean, I agree that typically, we see 55 years, but I really don't know what the genesis of that is.
Right. And, I mean, the reality is here, if we want to have a model that sticks around, I don't want to, 55 years from now, I probably won't be talking about this, but, you know, the problem isn't going to get any, it's going to get worse. It's not going to get easier. And so are we setting ourselves up for something that's going to flip to free market, and there we've lost housing, just like we're talking about losing housing stock right now?
Right. Any other questions? I have one, and maybe I just wasn't following you carefully enough. Do you need to have the second site under your control before you can proceed with development of this site?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so, and does the 500,000 coming from, what did you say, the Department of Agriculture?
Yes, 550, actually.
Does it require that the second site be within city limits? Or could it be in the cottage?
I don't think that that's the case. I don't think that's necessarily the case.
So you have a broader, you do have a broader opportunity than just inside the city?
Right. And certainly, one of the things that we've been doing with the wine industry associations and made presentations to them, either have or will be, on the farm worker piece of this, are looking both inside the city and outside, as long as it's in an area that is quote-unquote "urbanized" near services. That, you know, usually is a requirement of a lot of these funding, you know? So there, they can have access, some access to transit, and schools, and other services as opposed to being in a remote location.
Okay, good. All right, any further discussion?
I don't have the full history of why and when we decide to waive certain fees. I understand, you know, affordable housing is probably one of the main areas where we do that, but does the city have just sort of general guidelines or policies in place that would direct us so it's not so much case-by-case? Because essentially, somebody can come in tomorrow and say, "Well, I want my fees waived because I want to build, I don't know, a second unit in my, at my house, and it's going to be for a low-income employee that I employ." I don't know.
You could sit down, Mr. Siegel.
Yeah. I don't know what the background is.
I just, I don't like the piecemeal approach. I support the waiver in this, but I'm looking at the broader issue.
That fee waiver's been on my
That fee waiver's been on my list for about a year now. We identified that that was really necessary. We just haven't been able to get to it, but I agree with you, there should be some parameters. This, in fact, is not a fee waiver. It's a payment of the fees out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so it's a little bit different, just to be clear. But I'm, I'll bring that to you at some point.
I'm pretty confident we've got some good language in our general plan and in the housing element that will consider fee waivers in a situation like this. And again, I want to stress what the city manager just said. This is not strictly a fee waiver. The city is going to be paid for its services. And then the other quick comment I would have is that we do have the Turley project, hopefully, coming forward at some point, and there's going to be a significant draw on these housing trust funds, assuming it goes forward from that proposed project. So I don't want anybody out there to think that even after this, we might, that we have really a free amount of $900,000. We likely do not. Am I roughly right about this?
We are anticipating a majority of the trust fund will be needed to complete probably both this project and Turley.
Okay.
I would also add that the Calderon settlement, I don't have it in front of me. I can't give the council the specific language, but the city did make certain representations about providing such financial support for projects like these, including fee waivers. And again, I understand this is not a fee waiver, but...
Well, the Calderon settlement was approved by the city council, so that language too would be city policy, given the fact that it's in the settlement. All right.
Any further council discussion?
Why just, I mean, is the rest of the council open in our, you know, is Our Town open to the idea of this not being, maybe it's a minimum of 55 years, but not being deed restricted, that's going to revert to free market after some period if we really want to have, you know, a perpetual stock of affordable housing in this community? I think that's an important point. I mean, maybe no one else...
99 years, I've heard. I've heard of 99 years.
Indeed restricted in perpetuity. There's no, I mean, I think there are some options here, and I guess, is this a point? Will we have some other point at which we can make that decision? Or is this our, you know, maybe the last opportunity to make a decision like that?
I don't know if it's outside the purview of what's on the agenda.
It is.
But, or you had, when we did the amendment to the sales agreement, there's additional paperwork that needs to be done that I'm currently working with Our Town, Saint Helena on. And those 55 years are identified in that most recent deed restriction document that I'm working on. So if you're interested in having that, I would have to put that back on the agenda for two, in two weeks, for you to give me that direction. That would be my...
When we talked about, if I, I can look back, but when we talked about the sale, it was for affordable housing, not affordable housing that reverts to market in, you know, five decades. At least, that's my recollection.
If I recall, I believe that the documentation I brought forward for the sale was 55 years.
Did include...
That standard industry that comes from some, it has to do with California legislation, and the city attorney and I don't know whether that was a maximum or a minimum, but that's where that came from. They just recently raised it a couple of years ago, and I believe it was at 30 or 35, and they raised it to 55. And that's the number we're all using. So we'd have to do a little bit of research, but we could certainly bring the item back in two weeks.
I'll look into it outside. It's not, we don't need to belabor it anymore.
I think it's going to be a simple answer that my office can get pretty quickly, but this discussion really is exceeding what the Brown Act will allow us to do.
So as Mayor, I'm liable to confine our discussion to the Brown Act. So at this point, the chair would entertain a motion. Oh, I thought, excuse me, yes, let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak?
My name's Bobby Monette. I'm here as a resident. I just have a question to clarify. Is there any provision to give preference to local, to people who live and work in Saint Helena in this, in this process of choosing who you're going to select for the people who get to have these...
Questions are directed to staff?
I'm sorry.
The questions should be directed here.
My bad.
But I think based upon the discussion we just heard, Ms. Monette, that's likely to be outside the scope of the current discussion.
Oh, I can't ask that question.
You can ask, but I don't think we should respond.
The Brown Act would allow a very brief response.
Very brief response, oh, good.
Just yes or no would be fine.
The city does have a local preference requirement for affordable housing, but that applies to properties that are managed by the city's housing authority.
So that's not this property?
It's my understanding this property will not be managed by the housing authority, but...
I thought it was tied to the receipt of federal funds.
We adopted a resolution in connection with the Calderon settlement that updated the local preference. Again, I don't have that in front of me this evening, so I can't recite it to the council.
As a member of the, if we can get, well, I'd really love to have that clarified in some way at some future time.
Okay, thank you.
Any further public comment?
Mary Stevenson, Our Town, Saint Helena. As we showed in the presentation, the great majority of the people who applied for this did live Up Valley. There, I think, I think it's 27, I can't remember exactly, live in Saint Helena, California, and Saint Helena and Calistoga. And virtually every single application had at least one person working Up Valley. Not necessarily Saint Helena, because most of these people are farmworkers and hotel workers, so they work in, not in town, but in the area. We cannot do a preference for housing because of the USDA requirements, so we can't do any kind of local preference. But as we've said before, this project, along with every other project Up Valley, Stone Bridge, Hunts Grove, La Padera, Lakewood, and the Calistoga Apartments, every single one of those has, 99% of the people are working Up Valley. So that we, the, we don't need that regulation, because that's what we get already. The other thing I'd like to say is that the 55 years is the regulation that the USDA requires us to have. We can ask them if we can do higher than that. I know we can't do lower, but that's the standard of all affordable housing. And I don't think, we can't, we can't change that without getting the USDA rural development approval. So I don't know if that's possible or not. And lastly, I'd just like to say that the eight units are, the cost is under $300,000 for each. And included in that cost is approximately $35,000 per unit for building permits. So the city is going to get a significant amount of money back from these people as part of their projects.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Thank you.
And I'll close public comment. Invite any further council discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilor Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Thank you very much. I think that concludes our agenda for the evening.